And what I would like for you to do, and some of you have done this before, but maybe not together, is I want you to think about the teacher in your life who had the biggest impact. And for some of you, when I said that, you immediately thought of someone, and others of you are blessed, and you're saying, well, should I say him? Or should I say her? And I am going to restrict you to one person, so you don't get to give me all as well. And in no particular order, I will not make eye contact, because people are kind of following them, and if I look at them, I would like for you to tell me who that person is or was who had the biggest impact in your life. And what the impact was. I'm not going to look, in no particular order. This'll look very good. Consult with six for three hours.
It was my junior algebra teacher. I had a real problem with math, and I just thought I was terrible at it, and I did not score well enough on the SOT to be able to take the entry-level math class at Texas. And I was told that unless I scored higher, I wouldn't have to go to another community college. I guess her took a few classes. And so she tutored me for about three months, and I went to her home over the summer. And I think she volunteered. And I've ever, forever indebted to her, because not only did I make a better score and was able to take the class when I started college as a freshman, but she gave me confidence, and she made me believe that I could do math. Yeah. And I learned from that. And it was done, and it was fun. I look forward to it. It was a subject I needed.
Did you ever tell her the impact?
I did, I have. I have told her several times.
Do you remember when Mattel came out with a Barbie doll? And what she said was, "Math is hard." Yeah, it lasted about two weeks, because people came down so hard on that company for perpetuating that stereotype that girls were not good at math. So, I'm Barbie-dipping, actually. Okay, who next?
I'll go.
Thank you. Because I was just going to tell these two they couldn't go, because if either of them went, then we would go in order. It's a thing.
My turn, man, my turn.
Yes, thank you.
You never had thought of that before? Appreciate that question, but it just popped in real quick, that I don't remember as many people do, all their teachers that had an impact. I don't remember that. But my sixth-grade elementary school teacher, I would say had the biggest impact. And she was an ordinary, I won't say her name, a little tiny Hispanic lady who had a way of approaching the class and interacting with students. They made the process fun, not just on the playground. And I had not an interest at that time in math, but she cultivated that interest and kind of found that in me. And that carried throughout everything I'm doing now, is math and math-related subjects, all the way through high school, college, and beyond. And she was just a fireball. And she was always the positive bright spot in the room. She could handle adversity. She could handle certainly a large number of sixth-grade little children. And now, as far as contacting her and appreciating that education I received from her, I didn't do that. I probably wish I did. Of course, she's probably not with us any longer. So, I, no, not. But shortly after that, of course, middle school and high school, then we got a family for college. But that was a memory that I should always, should have gotten back with her and maintained contact, because she was very, very, very good at establishing relationships with kids and building under talents. I didn't know that talent existed.
Do you have a Facebook page?
No. Oh, yes, I do.
Well, then look for her on Facebook, is what I'm telling you. Because my daughter told me that all the young people got off Facebook, and it's just old people on there now. And I asked her, I said, so, no, I'm sorry. I read that in an article. So I asked my daughter, I said, she goes, yeah. I said, well, where'd all the young people go? She said, wouldn't it defeat the purpose if I told you? It's a true story. So I have Snapchat, I have Twitter, I have Instagram, I have LinkedIn. And as soon as I remember the past hurts, I am going to be dangerous.
I will do that.
I can't you not look for her.
I would be interested.
Yeah?
But she had a huge impact, and just didn't appreciate that, or maybe realize it is often such a shame.
I think most of the time it's, okay, who next? And anybody can go now, because we've broken the curse of going in last step orders.
I'm sorry. My name is Stephanie Torres.
Hi, Stephanie, I'm Kay. And let me tell you what we're doing. You haven't missed much at all. You missed a lot, I'm going to keep you out. All right. What I just asked them was to think of the teacher in their life that had the biggest impact. And I'm going to restrict you to one, so if you have three that you really, really thought had a big impact, you've got to have to pick one. But I'll give you some time to think and grab it. So, okay, thank you.
Well, I'm going to piggyback, I don't know what's going on, but it was a math teacher for me also.
Oh, wow.
It was a...
Hold on, excuse me?
Sorry, Kay, I was asking if Kerry was drinking a martini over there.
Oh, yes, he is. And it was only for people who got here early. They're playing well in the martini.
Sorry. He's a little confused. What in the world is that?
I meant to bring mine out.
Sorry, Norman, sorry.
Anyway, she was a math teacher, and I encountered her in the 10th grade at the A.J. Moore High School. And she was an algebra teacher, Mrs. Whitmore. And...
My grandpa, my grandpa was a math teacher.
He was a math teacher.
That has nothing to do with anything, I'm sorry.
But she, I guess, you know, I was always thought pretty good at math anyway. But when I got to the 10th grade, started taking algebra. And she just encouraged me to go ahead and keep on taking all the, I took trigonometry, I took algebra analysis, everything that was a 10th, 11th, 12th grade. I kept on taking analysis and everything. And she just encouraged me. Now, the downfall of that was that when I went to take my college test for college, I fought math. So they sent me to the remedial, when I went to MCC. They said, "We got remedial math." I said, "I'm in what?" And I told Kerry later why I did that, but it's a story.
First you're saying, "Why?" You said, "What?"
Yeah. But after the first, after the first two or three weeks on a remedial math class, the teacher threw me up to the side. He said, "Mr. Man, why are you in here?" And I said, "Because I got a little test score." He said, "You know, you gave me a little test and everything, whatever." He said, "You'll make eight. I want you to aggress other students in this class." That's all I did, I didn't take another test or work out. And when I saw Mrs. Whitmore, and this has been about four, five years ago, I did get the chance to tell her that because of her encouragement and everything, what I did when I went into the military, a lot of stuff was math-based. I worked in military intelligence. And that was, and then I was an electronic technician.
I think normally you do know we're only here for three hours, right? I'm going to give you my super-secret cellphone number. I got some little...
I might preach with a microphone.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to have to pass the plate if you say anymore.
Anyway, yeah, so, yeah, yes.
Mrs. Whitmore had a big impact. Okay. You call me later, when I'm driving to Asil tomorrow. Okay, who next?
Asil.
Asil.
Where's that?
Google it, ma'am. Google it. Who next?
Maybe, yes. 10th grade English teacher.
Wait a minute, are these two talking again?
Yeah, Sam.
Don't make me. Y'all know, I grew up when child abuse was legal. Please don't make me show you now.
In some places, it still is.
Well, it's going to be here in a minute. If I have to split you two up, stop it. Go on, please, sir.
Sharon Mansfield, 10th grade English teacher. That's from a, you know, a pretty strong competition from a good number of teachers that are really good. The educational experience I've seen, like, she stands out, but just because... Basically, she taught me to write, and which forced me to over-nature thoughts. And I don't know that I've been introduced to that concept before her class. I probably didn't pick it up elsewhere, for whatever reason. I was open to the idea at that time, or the information.
Did you ever tell her the impact?
Oh, no, that's not what I'm going to do.
Well, you're not, I don't want to break it to you, but you're not a young man, sure, so you can still...
Right now, and she's not lying.
Are you sure of this?
Yeah, I read her if it's worth it.
Okay, that's pretty good evidence.
You're only a good...
Pretty solid.
Though I do have some Facebook friends. I do have some Facebook friends who are deceased, but then...
Right. She's, yeah, she's passed.
Okay. Who next?
Because I was kind of the coach boy at University of Firstman Year.
What did he coach?
Basketball. Yeah, he wasn't really my teacher. He just came into the classroom and spoke to us one day. Classroom, that little rowdy teacher left, and he came in. Just the speech he gave, you know, sat there, he'd sit there and realize, you can go this way, or you can go this way. The way he behaved, and his, yeah, his, the speech he had was pretty good. I wasn't one of the rowdy kids.
Of course. You guys should have said hi, but okay.
His speech made a big difference.
Did you know that was a childhood?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, every time I was here, we still talked a lot.
Okay. Who next?
I had a, she was actually a GT pull-up teacher when I was a third grader. She did, we had like a one more than 12 age grouping. And I remember her very distinctly. I was a military kid. Her name was Mrs. Willis, and she had gotten a march with Martin Luther King Jr. And she was just a really incredibly inspiring lady. And just had an impact on me about just, you can do anything. Doesn't matter where you're from, and you know, what's on, you can do anything. And also, she was encouraging, because when I was that age, all I really wanted to do was read. I didn't want to really do my homework, return and things, pay attention classes. I just wanted to sneak a book and read. She encouraged that, but sort of tried to send me into different directions so that I wouldn't be getting in trouble about that all the time. And I wish I, I wish I had a way of contacting her, but it was when I lived in South Dakota, because I was a military kid, and we moved probably two years after I had her, I guess. So, and I don't know her first name. But she was a great teacher.
I bet you could track her down. I could help you, because I'm good at that. So I feel like, okay, who next?
Stephanie. Sorry, I, sorry, I can't, like, so I don't really know what we're doing, or what...
No, I just really just told you what we're doing. That's it. I'm not a deep person, really.
Miss Baga, Spanish teacher when I was in high school. And she told us all about Spain and said that we have to go out and see the world. That to stay here in the U.S. would be limiting to go out and travel. And so it wasn't educational, but it was more, yeah.
So, did you see Spain?
I've never seen Spain, but I've seen a lot more other countries.
Okay, did you ever tell her the impact?
We would sit and talk all the time. I mean, as in a group of girls would always sit. It was an all-girls Catholic school called... And so...
You do know I was a prosecutor, right? And you do know you didn't answer my question. My question, ma'am, was, did you ever tell her the impact? Not, did you sit around chatting with her at the Catholic church?
I get around about where we chat. So I don't, I don't know what you mean directly about that question.
I mean, did you say?
Did I say, "Thank you"?
"Let me tell you what an impact you had on me," especially years later. I mean, you didn't have to tell her then, because real men don't do that.
She was never a young man.
I know. She was a young man.
I was, the accent was on me, yeah. But you can do it when you're older. So, do you know where she is?
No. Don't know where she is. She's not at the school. Her name's Miss Baga. I don't follow Facebook very often. I don't social media very often, so...
Not final. Because you make a difference to her.
I think she realized...
Oh, yeah. Everybody always thinks that...
No, I mean, I think the relationship that we had was a very open relationship. It was a two-way communication. We came to her with issues or problems.
Have you been talking to one?
You're the one who asked me all the questions.
Don't you want to tell me? I'm not, I've got to go with the yes or no answer. You're right, it's my fault.
Like, Kay, cut me a break.
Nah, you got here late, I can't get you right back. Okay. Well, I guess it's just down to you.
Yes. And I serve mine, 4th grade Mrs. Killingsworth, Princess Killingsworth. And this year, I moved to Texas after having lived in foster care and came with my sisters to live with an identical that I didn't know in Copper State. And great teacher, nurturing, kind. Was in a brand new elementary school. We moved in, I think, at Christmas time. I had still some blockers, or... It was just, everything was new, and it was very special. It was the first time I really remember studying, being successful, and it was, it was great. And I, yes, I'm still in contact with her. It's just a lot.
Now, what did these people have in common? Which makes you happy listening to other people talk. What they had in common?
They were teachers.
Yes, they were teachers, and they had an impact. You know, you are so quick. Yes. What else?
They're all encouraged. You heard encouragement, I listened, every student, they encouraged. It sounds like everybody had one idea of what their identity was, and the teacher encouraged them to...
Now, you can't give all the answers, ma'am.
Yeah, encouraged them to go better, you know, inspire.
They had insight. They saw something in you, but maybe you didn't even see in yourself. And what Stephanie said was, they inspired me.
What else?
To build relationships.
Yeah. There had to be a relationship, because otherwise, they would never have been able to get into either. What else?
They're a little more...
Yeah.
There's something to have fire.
You're inspired, you're inspired. I like this. What else? First fire?
Confidence made you feel special.
Yeah. Does it occur to you?
I think it's interesting. This is one of the why, you get a, this is Mansfield, that biting you. It was totally something else, sarcasm. And felt very much comfortable expressing exasperation.
I think I have a problem.
Yeah, and I, but it's, you know, it wasn't a pat you on the back. That's not what you got.
Yeah.
And that's okay. I responded to that, and it's what I needed, I don't know, but...
But none of you said they were the easiest teacher. The one who lets you get by their things. The one who didn't care how you acted. None of you said that. Now, what you think if, if that teacher did anything that we would not allow a teacher to do now? Because I heard, teacher tutored me. I was at her house on weekends. Now, I think about now, we'd probably go, eh, eh. What else? What else did they do that...
Well, I'm from an older school, A.J. Moore, all-black school. And every teacher, man, woman, that walked the halls of A.J. Moore carried a paddle.
Yes.
And it was with the paddle you get, that's, she didn't hear a girl or a boy.
Yes, I got paddled, and yeah. I have none to be compared to, but that's, hold on, I've done therapy. Okay, what else? I went to kindergarten three times. For three years. Okay, anyways. But what else?
Had a small class size.
Yeah. What we wouldn't give for that?
More tax money. It's what we have to give for that, apparently.
Yeah. Think about how your life would be different if that person had not been in your life. Would you have traveled to other countries? Would you have chosen to go this way instead of that way? Would you have been able to go to the school you wanted to without taking remedial classes? Would you have been tutored? How would your life be different? Just think about that. Would you even be in education? Would you be in the field you're in? Would you be in a, in a field that requires you math?
I would say at that time, you know, I was turning point or whatever as far as what I was interested in and what I would, it wasn't be thinking by any means, but what I found to be interesting, that I thought that I could do more research or study on, that would captivate me. So I think, yeah, I would have, don't know where I would have gone, but I think it kind of was the, was the point in time which filled a kind of directional compass for me.
Now, you decided where you were going. You said something, though, about being captivated. Every one of you talked about a teacher who grabbed your attention for some reason, in some way. And in this particular iteration, everybody had somebody who had a positive impact. I didn't say positive impact. I said impact. And about 5% of the time, I have somebody who tells me about somebody who had a very negative impact. And there are different stories. A guy who said that he had such a bad experience, I can't remember if it was first or second, but whatever it was, the next year, he was with a kid in the bushes for about two weeks. When the bus, when he got off the bus, he was literally going to the bushes. It took him a couple weeks to figure out to get away from the class. But the teacher that he got was so good to him, it made up for the one before. So, yeah, I didn't say public school teacher. So sometimes people tell me about parent, the grandparent, the Sunday school teacher, somebody who, as you said, not really, you know, a teacher. You said, "Not really educational," but it was. But it was. So why do we spend time on this? Other than this is like my favorite thing to do in the whole world. Why do we spend time on this? How do you meet the purpose? I don't just, I don't know how to put this.
Because we have comments.
You do have common experiences. Why else?
Icebreaker.
Yeah. Well, it's in the book manual, do it, icebreaker, just leave. Okay, why else?
It's our business.
Really?
Yes.
Tell me more about that.
We're charged with the responsibility of creating a system that's filled with teachers who can inspire, aspire.
Inspire.
Yeah.
Don't you know what every kid in your district to have somebody who has that kind of impact? Somebody who's a champion for them, somebody who tutored them, somebody who could owe that extra money. And you realize that you all said different people, but there were other folks in those classes that maybe weren't inspired by that teacher. Maybe didn't get that extra. So, you have to have that diversity, because the person who inspires you is not the person who inspires me. The person who takes extra time with you and brings something out to you that you didn't know isn't the one that does that for me. So sometimes we think if everybody, you know, had a teacher just like I did, no, you need to have a teacher that inspires you. So when you, when we go through this, when you are in this room making decisions to make that system, I want you to think about how what you do impacts what kids get. And not just academically. Because yes, we want them to succeed academically, but we also want them to be inspired. We also want them to find their career. We also want them to find their confidence, that with, or whatever it is, that we get. But yeah, it's not just academic. So I want you to think about, is what we're doing is, are they succeeding because of that or inspired by it? And I say that to absolutely every board, because that's part of my job, is to inspire them to say, what else can we do? What can I do to have more teachers like that? And the other part of it is that, and this is my mantra for this year, I want to support the people who support our kids. So does what you do in here, how does that support those teachers that you say you want? You want them to do all those things? Because we had Jamie Boma, had some relationship a couple of years ago. And I keep saying I'm going to bring it. He pulled out of his pocket a sheet like this that was single-spaced, both sides, of all the things that have been added to what we have to do for kids since the '60s, besides just teach. And I was teaching on microaggression last week in HEB. And somebody said, one of the things that somebody had said that was a microaggression was, oh, you're just a teacher. What do you mean, "just a teacher"? I was on a flight, a Southwest flight, and they had a whole magazine that was dedicated to teaching. And the one thing I remember is it said, "Teaching is the profession that makes every other profession possible." And I went, huh! Do you know that's true? Like, duh! And if that's true, why don't we treat teaching with the respect that we used to do? So I want you to think about, how do we inspire kids and how do we support those people that we are asking to inspire kids? Okay. So, I have not been here. I don't know how long it's been since I've been here. Y'all could invite me back, I must have done something bad. But I want you to tell me the things that are going well here. And I used to say, tell me what makes you proud, but I know that pride is a sin, and I don't want to cuss y'all with sin. So, I would write a song...
I usually write it, that one's right, it's stuck with you.
What? That pride is a sin? You know, I went to Catholic kindergarten for three years. Especially, I knew pride was a sin. And there's a record. I went to Catholic kindergarten for three years. I literally do got little words to hail Mary.[1540.90] do got little words to Hail Marys, so I obviously was like, receiving the remediation, and I still do, but anyway. Just a second.
I'm excited about our renewed focus on curriculum instruction.
Uh, I'm inspired by the potential to continue our connection with the community, to benefit faculty, staff, and certain students.
Give me an idea, because you all want to be talking about what's your connection to the community, and I know it's, it's varied, but give me an example.
Community wise? I mean, connection with family.
Okay, tell me how you do it then.
Well, I mean, reaching out and working through campus opportunities, calling teachers, the administrators. And, I mean, work through the church communities and find ways to build bridges. So I think the potential we have to expand and capitalize on the resources that we have from the family and the community, which are vast, are yet to be tapped or tapped further.
What else? What else makes you excited or?
I, uh, when people ask me about the RSD, the one I push the most and I tell parents about is I would do a credit program, and I have some wrong, you know, to let parents know that, you know, hey, you get your kids in there, you can get them. Every year, I think every year, we've been increasing the number of kids that walk across the stage at MCC one week, they come back and walk, walk across our stage. I think, I think that is, well, like I said, by myself, I push that. Because I, you know, tell parents, hey, you can get two years of free education to us.
You know about sixty by thirty? That we want sixty percent of our kids to have either a certificate or a college degree by twenty thirty? Well, they've already said that it's not, we're not gonna need it. I'm not sure how we figured that out, but they said we're not gonna need it. But another part of sixty by thirty says that we don't want our young people to be spending more than sixty percent of their income paying that college loans, which frightens me that sixty percent is okay. I'm not sure, because I got one kid that had no debt, and I got one kid who cannot pay attention. I mean, he will never, nobody's ever gonna marry him because he can't buy a house car. I mean, he's just gonna be deroiled. But the idea that you can get college without going into that debt is huge. Because if my kid ran out a bunch of debt on a credit card, I'm not a big fan of bankruptcy, no, 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 no judgment for people, but they could file for bankruptcy and discharge it. If you run out a bunch of debt trying to get an education, you cannot discharge it, you don't have to. And to me, that's insane. So we've got a whole bunch of kids who did what we told them, they got out of school, they got a degree, they maybe got another degree, who are gonna deroil forever. So that's huge. What else? What else makes you excited?
Kind of along the same lines. I mean, we have two very strong programs with our law firm, Walmart.
I know.
And, I mean, I think those are, those are very exciting. And I'm always excited when we're doing well with fine arts and performing arts and visual arts, and we've got some great recognition for visual arts.
Okay, tell me what GAWA stand for. I know it's greater work, or work area.
One is the health, and the other one's the manufacturing.
Oh, okay.
And I don't get the whole acronym wrong, because that's kind of the way I am, so.
Well.
But the manufacturing brand one is a little bit older than the health, the health one. But it goes, but I've been around for.
Well, I was here when you started well. And I've been bragging about you all over the state, because let me just tell you, I don't, I don't have any original ideas. I just take what you sell me, and I go tell other folks about that, and I'll tell them. And I was so excited, because when you started that, one of the things that stood out for me was, first of all, you partnered with the community, you gave them the building, and you got real people to come teach. And they said, if you teach them too well in air conditioning, then when they go get a job, they're gonna freak out, because there's not gonna be, um, there's not gonna be air conditioning. You made them actually apply, you made them be drug tested, you simulated the conditions that they will have in the real world. And stop me if this part's wrong, because I've been telling people this, I hope it's not a lie. But when they went for the interview to be accepted into the program, you put a number on their name tag. And somebody said, what's the number? The number's how many times they were absent.
True.
Because if I'm an employer, you may look great on paper, but if you don't show up to work, then I don't care how great you look. But it made kids make a real world connection between, oh, showing up to school matters, showing up to work matters. So I've been bragging about y'all, so I now have to tell them about GWA and WWA. All right. So, what else? That's pretty comfortable.
Do you want to know the same thing?
Um, I'm gonna guess the M is for manufacturing. Okay, and the other one, I'm not sure.
Radio, WGO, Advanced Manufacturing Academy.
Yeah, I got that part.
Radio, WGO, Advanced Healthcare Academy.
Well, how's it GWA? Oh, healthcare, just HC. Oh, that is just, that is just sneaky. It doesn't bother me to say I don't know, but let me just tell you about it. I could talk for fifteen minutes about, and not even know your name, I mean, really, so. Okay. And I may find these notes in one day. And then, so what's the welding one? And what's the welding?
They got McDonald's at the healthcare, too. They got real McDonald's.
Oh, okay. I thought you were talking about.
That's a little mean.
Yeah, okay. Like, feel like, life, like, they necessitate.
I mean, they, they, the things they practice on, I mean, they got polos, they do CBL and everything like that.
Oh, good. You said phlebotomy, and I heard lobotomy, and I'm like, these kids are doing phlebotomy? Okay, yeah. You've got to.
No, but it's just very high tech, the, you know, stuff that they use over there.
Let me just ask the question, how come I don't ever get here early enough to go visit any of this stuff? You know, y'all just, y'all treat me, oh, it's bad.
GPS.
Yeah, that could be it, probably one of the circumstances. Okay, so what's the welding acronym?
It's a one.
Oh, it's A1.
Yeah. Robotics, welding.
In search of.
Building trades now?
Yeah.
It's in machinery. It's a ball.
So I think the great thing about the manufacturing thing is.
Okay, hold on a second. Well, Stephanie speaks about it. And she's telling me the thing about.
She's huge. Yeah. The great thing about that is, you know, the business league is really behind it, there's a lot of, there's people who see the value in it, in the company, I mean, people around here, companies see the value in it, and honestly, wanna raise up their workforce with these academies. And so I think that's a great component, to kind of tag on to that. That's a little bit broader than just even the academy. Um, I think our parents as teachers, so getting, about that, uh, getting people from our school, from the district, to go out to homes and make, and work with kids who are little.
Too young to be in.
Three, all the way up to school age, helping parents know what to do to help their kids be school ready. Um, that is a phenomenal program.
You can't give me all of them. No way, wait. I gotta leave some for Karen and for Jose. So put, just write that in, and you were saying, you two, you were chatting about GWA or GWA or something.
We were trying to remember what the different trades were.
Eh.
That are actually.
Revot, construction. What else?
Uh, plumbing.
Plumbing.
Precision, machine.
What else? I'm not even sure what precision machinery is, but I bet it's.
Machine, machining. Yes. No, they did, they were plasma cutter.
Okay.
Reading, printing, too.
And you got the body.
Reading.
Okay. That's a big deal. That's a really big deal. And consulting your business community about what do you need from us, breaks that gap between, here's what we prepared them for, here's what they really needed. So that's one of those partnerships. Okay? What makes you excited?
Just, like, RSD as a whole, I mean, everything they said benefited my kids, benefited from. And, you know, the group credit was the most, that we liked the most, but everything else that they own, you know, the form, we're trying to come up with different things to help kids, I mean, that'd be, that'd be it for the whole.
And you know, when you are, when you're here, you take things for granted. And it's only when you talk to other folks and realize that everybody does not have these same things, or they, they're so small, they have to be in a consortium to be able to get a teacher to do that. Not that that's a bad thing, but you take some things for granted, and it's only when you talk to other folks. I have the benefit of being able to go around and realize that everybody has this. The other cool thing is being able to take advantage of what's in your area, because there are people that have, like on the ship channel, they have maritime, there are folks in the Dallas area who do, you know, aviation, because they've got the airport right there. So being able to tap into your community and say, what do, what does our community need? And everybody doesn't have to feel like they have to graduate and immediately go somewhere else, because there's no jobs. Okay, not that that's not enough to be excited or proud about, but what else?
I'll, um, mention a couple of things, and I.
You only go, yes, yes, mention one, because Stephanie's got one more, she's not telling. Don't get carried away.
I was really impressed with our 3K classrooms, when I walked campuses, um, it was the right, um, arrangement of the rooms based on research, the vice at centers, the right size of furniture, um, the placement of the words and the walls for the kids. There obviously was a lot of professional development and resources in those classrooms to, um, provide the best environment for the young students.
Somebody told me that America.
Really pleased by that.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Somebody told me America has the best education research in the world, but we don't always imply that other folks come over, take our research and do it, and are doing amazing things. So to hear you say that that was obviously based on research, not just, this looks good here, or this sounds good, is huge.
And it was not just one school that was consistent across campuses. So I was very pleased to see that.
Hold your second thought, I am back to you, ma'am.
Um, I was gonna say that I think one thing that RSD has going for it is, a lot of the people who work are in this district, are doing it because they either feel called, or because they wanna see change for the best, they wanna help. And so I would say that is probably all across the board, because, how about things all of us could be doing right now? But I see that in teachers, I see them in administrators, I see that, um, just aides, teachers aides, I mean, I've seen them all throughout the line. There's, there's other things that people could be doing, but they're sticking in here. And they're doing it because they either have this deep desire of calling, that they've gotta be here, or they feel like they can, they kind of want to put their shoulder into something, because they want to see change, and they wanna.
And even that's a call, and honestly, teaching is a calling, because clearly, nobody goes into teaching because they wanna get rich. You know, and they don't stay because they wanna get rich. But, yeah, how do we continue to inspire them and continue to, to foster that idea of, you know, who makes the difference? Yes, ma'am, your second?
One is similar to Stephanie's, it is, um, it's about people as well, but it's about school leadership. And I see, um, a lot of commitment and willingness to, um, do the right thing and, and push for the kids from the school leaders. And there's, there are people who've been in the district, whether they've been the principal or not, that have been here a while, and they, um, they're ready, they're ready to serve.
And it makes a difference, because every school has a different climate, and it starts from a person who, or people who are in leadership. And it makes a difference. Okay, what else? Not that that's not enough. And just so you know, I am not probably, and, and maybe I'm gonna ask you what keeps you awake tonight, so I'm not gonna just tell you, have you told me all the good stuff? Okay, good, we're, we're gonna say kumbaya and go home. We're gonna talk about.
I've been hearing a lot of schools, a lot of attention being paid to parent engagement, and not just the idea of parent engagement, but actually looking at, looking at evidence based practices, and what works the best, and what gets parents in, and that that actually has, you know, great impact on student success. And it sounds like, I mean, I'm hearing it at different places, and it sounds like there's kind of a, it's not necessarily the same every place, because I don't think it needs to be the same member school, but there's at least a cohesive idea that it's really important, and that it's gonna, you know, it helps move people in a north direction. So I think that's very encouraging.
And I saw something, Facebook is where I get all my information, so, you know, I shot one Facebook, I'm interested in social, but I saw something that said.
Another thing you see that is true.
It must be, it must be true. Well, it's saying, um, diversity is having a seat at the table, and I cannot think of what the other two, where I think inclusion was having a voice, and engagement is feeling like that voice has been heard. So it's, it's, it's not only do we need folks to have a seat, or to have a voice, but to feel like you've actually listened, whether it's parents or the business community, I mean, everybody wants to feel like it was taken into your care.
And one of the things recently that I, I was hearing, um, I want to say it was the principal, but was just this whole idea that if you're not giving meaningful engagement to the parents, they're not gonna come back, and they're gonna have a negative view of that, and they're gonna actually pass it on to other people, so you're gonna have like a, you know, a bad effect on parent engagement. So having something that's actually meaningful, that they're gonna wanna continue to do, that they actually can see results is very, you know, very important, so.
Okay, not that that's not enough, but what else? Now, I'm gonna tell you, when I leave, you're gonna wake up at midnight and go, we didn't tell you about this. So you do, I'm gonna give, I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna give you my super secret cell phone number, you're welcome to call me, I'm bionic, I obviously don't sleep.
So, I think what I, in this marriage, I think, seventy-seven, the, I think, the resilience of the spirit of the folks that are willing to do this job, all is not right in the United States, there's a lot of tough.
It is not perfect here?
Yeah.
Well, I am leaving, I only work in perfect districts.
Yeah. I won't go with.
In search of the perfect district.
And I think, I think we have some pretty exceptional talents, and, uh, in my mind, there's a noticeable absence of despair.
I'm sorry, it's much more despair. A noticeable absence of despair.
Yeah, palpable. I'm tired of what kind of a try. So, uh, just, I, I admire it, and it's a willingness to dive in, not get discouraged, not quit, and keep having a way at it, and it's a, uh, it's a phenomenal thing, and it's a, I mean, probably some character of a great mythology, but.
Listen to that.
I hate to mention that one, I seem to.
It scares me that I'm reading your mind, so I've gotta stop. David's place to be here.
You'll sleep all night. There's the other guy chained inside the hill, the buzzard looks at night, it's not him either.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, it's some tragic character, but it's, I admire their soldier like commitment to duty.
To what do you attribute that? Anybody can answer that.
Well, that could be a range of things that would explain it, but we'll stick to positive. Um, love. Love.
Love.
Yeah.
Love of?
Oh, other human beings, yeah, kids primarily, I think.
Oh, definitely. I've been telling.
Human beings in a way, yeah. The, uh, I, that's the only thing to me that would, I, I think, create, represent that kind of commitment to the task.
You will not be our communications director, let me share that.
I could be a teacher, I could be a community director.
Yeah, we, we did out some jobs for you.
Pep Rallings.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's not my day.
I think you're right, it has to be a love of other folks, of the kids, of the city, of the, whatever. And, and the only reason I ask is because you've gotta foster that. You have got, in everything you do, say, how you represent yourself, you have got to foster that. Because just like the climate of a particular school starts with the leaders there, the climate of this district is in your hands.
When you say climate, are you talking about culture?
Yes, weather and climate, there's, yeah, but that's, that's, yeah, that's exactly what I mean, I'm just teasing you. But yeah, the culture. And every time you change a member of a team, it's a different team. So I don't care how well or how poor the previous team worked together, it's a whole different team. And my mom passed away in two thousand eight, and I went on a great website, and the only thing I remember was it said, when you lose a member of the family, you've gotta figure out, what did that person bring? And you've gotta figure out who's going to do that. I mean, it could have been, they cooked the Thanksgiving turkey, because my mom's so long here to cook, okay, which one of us is, are we gonna trust to do that? So part of what team building is, is figuring out what do the new folks on your team bring? And what are the seasoned people on your team gonna step up and do? Because when I was a brand new board member, I didn't have to worry about, I didn't have to worry about anything, other than finding the, the administration building. But after nine years, when our superintendent left, and our board president retired, I went, oh my goodness, wait, I might actually have to know something, do something. So I couldn't just be the baby board member after nine years, I had to step up. Oh, please, I, some people have nine years of experience, I had one year of experience nine times, okay? So, I, I've been coming to this building for years, I still got lost coming to this building, so please, don't underestimate. Yeah, but, but you have to figure out how this at work. And sometimes that involves some mourning. Because if you had been on a team with somebody that you relied on, that you trusted, that you liked, and they're gone for whatever reason, you had to go with the wrong way there. You know, who am I gonna crack jokes with, or who am I going to talk, you know, what am I gonna do? So then you gotta figure out, what do we do from there? So that's part of what team building is, it's not looking back going, gosh, it was so good before. I really liked it when someone, someone was the president, I really liked it when I didn't have any responsibility. You can do that, but you can't leave looking backwards. So now you gotta figure out who's gonna step up and how they'll do this. And that's not the easiest thing. It's not. So that's what we're gonna spend, I want you to be thinking about, because I'm gonna give you a preview, at the end, I'm gonna ask you four questions. Hence I have these little, four colors, y'all never seen this, this is brand new, I learned some new tricks when I'm not here. But I'm gonna ask you questions, because it's gonna be the basis of how do we go forward. But what else makes you proud, and then we're gonna talk about, oh, what time is it? Is that clock right seven, eight, seven? Okay, you don't even break yet, I'll give you a break in a minute, but five minutes. What else makes you proud?
I think putting it all together from what Alan said, and Karen said about, and what Stephanie said, about the resilience of the people who work for us, because everyone who is in this district serving these kids doesn't have to be.
Yeah.
They're easier jobs, um, there's seventeen school districts around us.
Well, aren't there?
Probably all of our teachers could go work someplace else, um, they might have easier kids, or not as many challenges that we have. And so what you see when you go in and out of our schools is the dedication that our, that our people are giving to our children. And then our community too has really stepped up, and we have more volunteers than we've ever had before, because everybody wants to get their hands in and say, what can we do to help? And I think that's what makes you, like, go unique, because that was a decision I chose to take, staying here, whereas my kids here, I could have taken, I could have gone to one of these other smaller districts, um, where all the kids look like them.
Yeah.
Um, and, um, had similar experiences, and we chose to stay, and I think my boys are both better people because of our decisions. Now, they didn't receive the best academic experience that they could have received, Now, they didn't receive the best academic experience that they could have received, but they're good men.
Director Rita, I'm just gonna tell you.
Yeah, they're good men. They're tolerant, kind, and they, they, they work well with others. So I just, just the spirit here is something, is something to be admired.
Let me just tease on something you said, work well with others. There literally have been instances where corporations hired the best, the brightest, you know, got the highest on the test, but literally had to bring in people to teach them how to work well with others. You know, we thought that was funny on your report card when they'd say, does not play well with others. It's because you have to play with others. You have to be able to work with folks that don't look like you, don't believe the way you believe. And now more than ever, we are discovering that you really do have to talk to people who don't agree with you. You really do have to be able to, in a civil way, talk out differences. You know, when we decided because of the high-stakes test that we would cut recess down, what they figured out is we lost that time to actually work things out. Because my grandson, Huntsville got a F. I'm pretty sure it was for football because we went far during the playoffs than we ever did last year. And I would ask my grandson, he would say, well, two things. He started in kindergarten and he came home and he told us, I'm not going to third grade. But that's good because I just did a couple things in three. And I'd say, why are you not going to third grade? And he said, the star test. And I thought, what are we telling kindergarteners about the star test? I mean, the boy was terrified. But the other thing was, I would ask him every day, how was school? He'd say, good. And that's just partly because he's male. Because if you ask a man how his day was, he says, fine. You ask a woman how our day was, and we started Genesis, we go to Revelations, and if you're still awake, I mean, you've heard it all. But he would say, good. So I thought, well, don't ask him, you know, a one-word question. I'd say, what was your favorite part? And he'd say recess. Not P E. He didn't like P E because P E was structured. But at recess, you get to decide who you're playing with and decide what the rules are and, you know, figure it out and argue it out. And we're losing those skills. We thought that was just, you know, playtime. We thought that was just, you know, throwaway time and we needed to be filling and drilling and doing that stuff. But that's where we learned those skills. I'm gonna give you a five-minute break. Just because you're probably not bionic and you might need to go grab a cocktail or-
We're allowed to have martinis.
This is looking better if we are. We put those away. Yeah, was it, was it good though?
Here's some other shit.
Yeah, sure. I don't need to waste gallons of water. I'm not gonna love it. Not gonna have it. Thank you for sharing. Thank you for being the official food taster. Why does y'all be the only ones that has a bowl, have a bowl of stuff? How come y'all got, um-
Because Norman asked me to bring it out here. I brought it out there for you more than-
I'm sorry, why, why didn't Norman just bring it himself?
My hands were full.
Oh, sure.
As far as problems, it's not so many.
I see, I see. It's the haps and the half nats. I mean, really, how do y'all do this?
Would you like a cup of coffee?
No, thank you.
Okay.
I had one this morning.
Would you like some water? You have water?
I would love water. I wasn't going to beg, but, oh my goodness, thank you.
You're welcome. I'll find you some ice.
No, no ice, please. He knows. I would like, you do know, you don't know. No, yeah. No ice. I discovered that I am European. And Europeans do not do ice. And it makes me cold. But when you go to Europe and you say, water without ice, and they start laughing, they say, you're American because we want you to have an ice machine. I mean, you know what you're talking about.
So when I go to a restaurant then, and they serve me water without ice, I should be more European then, right?
Yes.
Just not ask for ice.
Well, I mean, if you like ice, ask for it, dead government. But I don't like ice. Yeah, I don't like ice. Except they say that drinking cold water burns more calories. Probably because you're shivering, but, you know.
Your body has to learn it too.
I love the way you've become and remembered that, right? I can't tell you how many times people have explained that to me. I don't care.
I still haven't figured out the formula of drinking, the number of ounces that's equivalent to half your body weight.
Yes.
Is that what you heard as well?
Yes, because you're eighty percent water. And every single order, every single- Half your weight in ounces of water. Yes, otherwise you're pretty much dehydrated.
Ooh, 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 eight-five ounces. Yeah, I thought we were gonna have, I was gonna drink a half a liter. It was good for the system.
No, 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 in ounces, no. Let's have a hundred pounds of water every day.
Yeah, one day.
You don't have to do it one day.
See, about twelve gallons.
Exactly. But yeah, no, it's, but yeah, and, and pretty much we're dehydrated. And if you drink caffeinated drinks, you need to add more to that. So for every ounce, yes, for every caffeinated ounce, you need to add another ounce of non-caffeinated.
I don't know why, and I don't drink coffee often, but-
It's not just coffee problem.
Okay, Jeremy, pull out a coffee.
Yeah.
And I'll be the one to fix the decaffeinated version. I still want you to-
Yes. It's literally on my list of things to do. And it's hard when I'm traveling because what goes in has to come out, I have to stop, but it's pain, so. Anyway. You are an enabler.
I know.
Just stop. I don't actually know what the policy measures about my way to work.
There is, but they're cleaning it's happening, so you're already going.
Uh-oh, wait. I'm glad we had a break when we did.
District one. I was like, that's so nice. Was it good?
Yeah.
I couldn't go.
Outgoing, curiously.
I don't care about somebody who drank one of the two.
I'm pretty sure this is gonna be-
Right from two streets, and all it's such as they're doing their adult care, so that's why I wanted to listen, but I can get into it, babe.
I'm pretty sure it's gonna hit me in a minute and it's gonna be awful.
That's not too bad.
Do you think that's called fire?
You know how marketing embellish? That's no exception.
I don't like outgoing. I don't need curiously strong things. See, pretty much if I give you five, you take four. My mother used to say, if you give them a nail, don't take her finger every time. And I thought she meant like hammer and nail, and for the longest I kept working with that girl. It doesn't make any sense. It's like when I was young, that song, I found love on a two-way street, kicked out and lost it on a lonely highway. I was like, what the hell is that mean? Yeah, you can't be too literal.
Board operating procedures.
Would you like to talk about them?
No.
Can you, did you read them and memorize them?
Okay. I just follow the president.
Norman, where are you going?
I'm in.
Hmm? Uh, don't even think about it. I will find you, stop you, bring you back. Let me just tell you, I can find anything, anybody. I may not be able to find the administration building, but I could find you. All I have to do is ask somebody.
No.
In Huntsville, you ask anybody where I live.
Oh, yeah, she lives right over there.
You could be a mass murderer looking for-
Now, 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 if they tell you I'm down in Butch, why are you gonna go?
I'm gonna ask somebody where it is. I have lived in major cities. I can find anything. I've never been lost forever.
Did you use your microphone?
No. I took a poll about it.
You took a poll? Whether it's, whether it's-
Yes. Well, actually, I Google it because anything I wanna know, I Google it and Google city.
Don't do it.
Do it. You'll regret it.
How do you recommend Alexa? I do recommend Alexa.
Alexa and I are very good friends, but I have really kind of weird internet. So apparently I plugged into anything, so Alexa doesn't talk anymore. Yeah, she says, yeah, don't even ask. You gotta go to Hunts Patch. Okay, last chance. What else makes you proud? Because then we're gonna move on to what keeps us awake nights.
I have their kids.
Okay, tell me about your kids.
Our kids and our families.
Your kids and your- Okay, tell me about them.
We've got a lot of, can I like buy a pen? Who does this?
Oh, wait, that's right, that's right, that's right, yeah. Okay, it's gonna stop.
A lot of single moms. Who are working in private schools, bringing their kids to school. I just remember that past. I think of a lot of our families who are Spanish-speaking, who are, the kids first language is Spanish, who are learning a completely different language and system. And I think about some of our other kids that will be parts of our community that are really, um, can be somewhat more vibrant and proud. And have the street smart that they've learned to be able to somewhat make it. You know, I think of kids all the way from like, I think the first time I met Carrie Sutcliffe, I was taking back, it was a football game, there was a good back of his beard. And his confidence and like who he was, and I thought, this kid is great. You know, and then I think about my other kid in one of my first program, or the first program, and then like, his mom speaks Spanish, doesn't speak Spanish, he's a doctor kid. He is going to college, but has no idea how to fill out any forms. And it's slugging through all these forms on his own. And I'm not sure, I don't, parents aren't done. So it's like, how do you fill out these forms when you don't have that? So I just look at that and like, his first generation, like, but the, that is very, you know, we talk about the resilience of our teachers and I think of the resilience of our parents, I think of the resilience of our kids and, um, yeah.
Turning off the moral too much, right?
Well, I think you gotta have to a child. So, yeah, so I think that's just, I think what I think of that, I do think are very unique. Amazing people. And amazing people that attend with honesty. Maybe kids. Some of them are challenging, but they dig that deep. They're just good.
There's some challenging school board members. There's some challenging doctors, challenging nurses, some challenging lawyers. Yeah, not, not credit company, of course, excluded, but we know, so. But, yeah.
We'll talk later.
My daughter, my daughter told me once that we, she had it too easy, that the people who really are successful are the people who had to overcome something. She said, it's your fault. You know, if you just had it so easy, I'd have been much, much better. And she was only half kidding. She was only half kidding. Think about how many kids you know who have got every advantage and don't recognize it because they take it for granted. Yeah, so go home, kids, and adversity for your retreat. But I hear what you're saying. Okay, what else?
Overcoming public perception.
Okay, tell me what that means.
A lot of perceptions built around what those that read the newspaper and look and review the contents. A lot of perceptions are built based on what the media wants to report. And it can be detrimental and it can be very positive. And I guess it depends on the subject matter. But we have, in spite of our successes and the potential and the great people and families that we have, we still have a perception that Waco needs and should do better. And to me, that's a rallying point that I know that everybody's willing to jump on board and engage with. But that, that goes back to the, to the, you know, the original comment I had about community engagement, parental engagement, capitalizing on those. Because those that see it and live it, believe it, and then they become our ambassadors. So I think my loss of sleep at twelve and twelve-thirty at night is how we overcome those perceptions because I don't think we're gonna live in the value of the newspaper. Is this not sensational enough to sell newspapers? The concern there is in a negative sense.
Right.
It could be, but it seems like the negative's creeped forward. So I think that is what I'm missing.
That segue is, segue is to what keeps us awake. Okay? That's very smooth, thank you.
So this literally keeps me awake is for this board, I have to provide the leadership to support. I feel very devoted and responsible and, um, indebted to the people who work for us. And when we do not, instead of provide leadership, when we don't belong, and when we aren't kind to each other or to our staff, that is almost intolerable. It's really, it literally keeps me up at night and I'm ashamed. So I'm worried about providing the leadership that the people who are dedicating their lives to these kids and their families and students, that we, that we set an example, like you were saying a couple times at Suction and Talk.
And what I say to absolutely every district is, if the eight of you can't get along, how do you expect the staff to? And if the eight of you can't get along, how do you expect the kids to? And if the eight of you can't get along, how do you expect the community to? And the reason I think there is an annual team building is because in the time between those annual team buildings, you will say something that hurts somebody's feelings, you will do something that causes somebody angst. And what usually happens is we sweep it under the rug. Because we don't talk about it since it's painful, it's difficult, it is not fun. So when I come in once a year, there's this big old lump under the carpet of all the things we put under there. And I think the reason they put into, I think brilliantly put into the requirements is that once a year, you at least talk about that stuff. Now, one of the things that makes it difficult, aside from the fact that it's not fun, is because there's a camera. And it's hard to be honest when I can turn this on. Where, where is this? Is this like on the website or is it like a TV station that's showing on?
It's recorded.
See, y'all, when I was on the board in Huntsville, we actually had our Channel Seven, our college kids standing there, recording, oh, okay, this is an irritable meeting. But in any case, whether they can see it live or they can see it later, it, it has a chilling effect on what we do and what we say. But what I'm going to say to you is, you gotta figure out a way to have those conversations. I mean, you do, because if, I teach spiritual conversations. And what we say is, if you don't talk about it, you will act it out.
Exactly.
And I'm telling you, I'm not immune from that. I will do exactly the same thing. I might not say anything, but there was a time when I was on the board where somebody that I wasn't getting along with started talking, I'd go, oh. You know, not too dramatic, there he goes again, oh. Haven't said a word, but I've said to everybody who is watching, staff, students who've ever wandered in, you know, and here's the thing, you cannot, I mean, it's like a family. You don't get to pick your family members. Because I promise you, there's so much I wouldn't have picked. But you're still family. And the cool thing is, I was the last of six kids. We fought like cats and dogs in that house. But if we stepped out of the house and anybody challenged us, it was gonna be six people. And that's what we gotta get back to. We have to. And because if I come on this broadcast and I see you giving people the eye or- And because if I come on this broadcast and I see you giving people the eye, or, or worse yet, just being flat roofed. Like I was with my seventh grade teacher. Like my music teacher became my English teacher, her name was Cynthia Cindery. She's probably on Facebook, I should find her. Because I thought, who goes from teaching music to English? And Cynthia Cindery was the perfect name for a music teacher, not so perfect for an English teacher. And one day she said, in the middle of class, she said, do you know what I'm talking about? And I said, ma'am, I don't think you know what you're talking about. Yeah, I got a note home, and I had to explain that to my mother. But even in seventh grade, I had that by the head, yeah. And it seems like a really cool thing to say at the time. But every time we do that, sarcasm literally means ripping the flesh. And that's literally what we do. And I come from a sarcastic family. We know how to rip flesh, flesh better than anybody. But when it exists in a family, it hurts. Not just the person you directed it at, but the people who are watching. And particularly, when you add a new superintendent. And trust me, I've been through this, I've served with three superintendents. And there's a part of the staff, no matter how dedicated they are, how wonderful they are, who go, hmm, wonder how long you're gonna be here. Well, you know what, I got shoes over, you may. I am just sitting here and I'll wait it out, and you can come with all your little programs and your little stuff, and, you know, I'll blink and you'll be gone. And so it's hard to inspire the staff to get on the bandwagon because they've been on so many wares. Every time, it's not just here, please, trust me, I understand, every time, you get somebody else. They bring their folks, they bring their training, they bring their programs. And staff gets a little bit weary. Because when I get behind you and I am following you a hundred percent, oh, there she's gone. So what you do during this transition, and it is still a transition, you've been probably, how many minutes?
A couple months.
Yeah, we don't tell time in months anymore now, we tell time in days, so I'm just, I'm just teasing you. But this is still the transition. And how you roll this transition out will determine whether we are able to support that staff, those families, those employees, those students. So I don't care what happened before now. I don't care what they put in the newspaper. What you do in here matters. Because if somebody on the streets of Waco is trashing the district, the kids, the staff, the board, the superintendent. It's bad, but it's not fatal. If one of your staff is doing the same thing, it is worse, but it's not fatal. If one of the eight of you is doing that, it is fatal. Because how do they follow you? How do they get behind you?
I don't think organizations deal very well with the cloud uncertainty.
You think?
And I think that's the ultimate outcome on the, the result, I guess, of situations you described.
Nature of course of acting. So if there is not certainty, people will put in their whatever will make them comfortable. If they're excited about you being here, they'll put in excitement. If they're not excited about you being here, they'll put in this doubt, distrust, and those become seeds. And it literally determines whether you fail or succeed. So you can't say to me, God, I love students, they're just great. Oh, I really love families, they're awesome. Boy, I really love our teachers and not love all of them. Because I'll never forget one time I was on board in Huntsville, and somebody wrote a letter to the editor. Trash all six board members except me. And I went to him and I said, I, I know you think you did something really good. Except you can't trash, you can't trash the six of them without trashing me. Because this is not an individual sport. It's like the sport of crew. If everybody's not rolling, at the same time, in the same rhythm, the boat just spins around. And I'm sorry, if you're playing football and the team loses, they say, boy, the team lost, but you won. No, they don't say that because you lost too. So that's what this is. So what else keeps you awake nights? Not you specifically, I don't mean to...
I spit my best shot.
Yeah, okay, good. That was a very good shot, thank you.
Thank you. Well, one of the things that I've worked as teachers, you know, we, with all my kids going to school, we lose. There's new teachers, we lose, there's teachers who've been here for years that we lose. And I'm like, why? Why, or, you know, what did we do wrong, or? And some of them, they take the whole page off at a different district. And we're like, you know, I sit there trying to figure out, like, where did we go wrong to make that decision?
I will tell you two things. Because every district I go to, it says, oh, teacher turnover is terrible. It's just terrible. Two things. First of all, there are some people who are going to retire, because believe it or not, they don't work forever. But that's not what you're talking about. You're not talking about the people who say, okay, I've just, you know, I've done it, as long as I can do it, I'm gonna have a life. But the other thing is, when you bring in somebody new and you say, fix this, lower that, raise that, do that. There's a certain number of folks who are gonna go, nope, I'm not doing that. I've gotten used to doing it this way, it's comfortable to me, I'm gonna keep on doing it. So all turnover isn't bad, because what you're doing is building that culture. You are building the W I S D culture, and it's a big culture. And there're gonna, there're gonna be some folks that say, yeah, I don't want that. And they're great teachers or great staff members for another district. Because if they can't get behind what you build and you say this is our culture, then they do need to be somewhere else. And I'm gonna tell you this, we hired who I thought was the best superintendent ever. No offense to you or anybody else, in Huntsville, for Huntsville. And when he came, we had an interview that went on to one in a morning. And at one point, he said, are there any sacred cows? I had no idea what that meant, I was talking about. But I knew, because I am quick, that if we said yes, he was not coming. So we all said, no, there's no sacred cows.
No, why?
And then he got there, no, then he got there, and he rearranged his cabinet. But there were two assistant superintendents, Carrie, I'll put you in court. There was two assistant superintendents that I loved, that he rearranged. And then I knew what sacred cows were, and I went, hmm, ooh, I did have some sacred cows. But I also knew that if I hired him and asked him to do something, that I had to let him do it the way he saw fit. And one of those superintendents moved to another district, and he sent me in the mail an aerial view of his property. I mean, there was nothing else in there, and I thought, is he saying if I come near there, he's gonna kill me? Is he saying, you know, our friendship's over? He, his name was Clayton Wakes. He was assistant superintendent, he went to Donbass and was the superintendent. He was born to be superintendent of Donbass. He loved it, his wife loved it, they had a bed and breakfast there, they were part of the community. He's like I am. I am so loyal, you have to die in my behalf. If that superintendent had not made that choice, he would never have gone to Donbass to know that. So sometimes what looks bad becomes the opportunity of a lifetime for them. So if you say, oh, poor so-and-so, she left, gosh, we loved her, and so-and-so, he left. You're not giving him a chance to be where God needs him to be. So I'm just, I don't know who's gone, I don't know why they've gone, but I'm just giving you another way to look at it from, you know... Because you can, you hire a superintendent, and I'm gonna use a football analogy, and I know that's not big in Texas, but go with me and just kind of follow me. But if you hire a football, do you hire football?
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't ask Carrie.
I, I did not even look Carrie's way, just let me just be clear. So you hire a, a football coach, and you say, you know, we love you, you have to win. If you don't win, we're gonna fire you. But you're in charge. But wait, we're gonna tell you who to play. But you're in charge, we love you, we're gonna fire you if you lose. Okay, we're gonna tell you what position to play everybody in, but you're in charge. Okay, we're gonna tell you how long to let them play. Okay, we're just gonna pop the plays. You can do that as a board. You absolutely do that. But if you do that, you don't get to hold your superintendent accountable. Because if you don't let her do what you hired her to do, then you can't hold her accountable. So...
But it's not one of our men to guard. We're all trained that our responsibility is to hire, fire, and evaluate the superintendent. Not fire, but...
No, I mean, that is, that is part of it, yeah.
Set policy. And set the budget.
Yeah.
That's pretty complex and difficult, but if it doesn't get into the arena, you just elaborate on it right there.
Yes, and I have been...
That's not out, that's not within our scope.
Would you like to travel with me and tell boards that?
I'd love to.
Because I've been teaching...
We'll use your GPS.
Well, yeah, you'll never anywhere. But I've been telling the boards that consistently for fifteen, sixteen years. And yet, there are times, every board, where somebody feels like, yeah, you know, we hired that person, I think she's pretty good, but I just need to tell her she needs to do this. And then another board member says, I just need to tell him. And we hired who I thought was the best superintendent ever. We lost him because of board members in his office every day telling him what to do, calling him on the phone every day, telling him what to do. Your superintendent can only do what a consensus of the board says.
But it's, it's like the chain of command. A principal can't do, can't tell his teacher what to do every day in the classroom.
Right.
They can mentor them and counsel them, but they can't, they can't be there all the time.
Yes.
So it's throughout the chain of the organization.
And I love you, because you need to travel with me. Because, because everybody will agree with that in theory.
And it's somebody they know.
When it's my kid, or it's my friend's kid, or it's, you know, my kid plays soccer, and it's the soccer team we're talking about. I'm telling you, dysfunction is job security for me, and I will never be out of a job. Because it may, because see, I can see when you are overstepping. I can't always see when I'm overstepping. And see, that's why the team concept becomes so important, because when you develop that trust, when you say, we're gonna be, we're gonna play by the same rules. Then I can say, Carrie, you know, when you said that, I think you were kind of set about it. Can we talk about that? Which I don't have a problem doing, but conversely, I have to allow Carrie to say to me, hey, I think you were out of line. See, because everybody thinks the superintendent's gonna do that, that ain't her job. It is the job of the seven board members to hold each other mutually accountable. And if we've agreed on these goals and we've agreed on these rules, then that should be easy. But as I tell people, rules without a relationship don't matter. If we don't have that relationship, what did y'all all tell me about the teacher who made an impact? There was a relationship. And I don't mean a bad one, because there are bad relationships, which we can say, yeah, we have a relationship. But it's just important to remind ourselves of why we're here.
Well, let's, let's, let's attack that.
Take one, pass it to Alex. Yes.
Uh, I don't support this superintendent, I'm voting against this superintendent.
Okay.
I just wanna make that clear.
Okay, you want me to document that?
I don't care, you know, but... I mean, I mean, I, but as... I feel like I have a responsibility. I still feel like my responsibility is to the people who I represent.
Okay.
And I still feel like that she was not the right person for the job. But that, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just one. But I don't think that, that Dr. Ken Cannon said I have tried to, uh, I haven't really, I don't really call him that much, do anything that much, but... But I, but I think, I think that she understands how I feel. And which, like I say, which she is. I will admit, she has done some things that I haven't agreed with.
Really? Oh, don't try to say that out loud.
And there's a lot of things that she found out I totally disagree with.
Okay.
But like...
Well, let me, let me ask you a question.
Is that always and forever? You'll never support everything?
At this moment, no.
Yeah, so it's not an always and forever?
No, not always and forever.
Let me turn it in for that. Okay, but let me ask you a question. You say that you have a responsibility... Because it's so rude, I should not be on camera too. That you have a responsi, it's his fault, put those over there.
Actually, bring yours over here.
Penny's up for you. When you say you have a responsibility to the people you represent, I'm gonna ask you a good question. Are y'all single member?
We're two.
Okay, wait, yes, no?
We are four single member, yeah, I'm sorry, five single member, two at our...
Yeah, I was gonna say, you're the math guy in four and two, just not answer. But I'm willing, I'm, I'm, I'm open to creative math. Okay, and whether you're single member or not really does that. Because the people you represent is a body. Because you're making decisions for all the children.
Correct.
Not just, just the children, maybe if you're single member, you're not making decisions just for that slice of kids that come from your, whatever your district is. So how does it serve the kids of the district for you not to support the superintendent? And you don't have to answer that, I just, just have to ask you, because I could pay you that question.
Well... They're not, uh, you gonna give me the microphone, you gonna shut me up, so...
Oh, no, no, I'm gonna let you talk. I don't wanna hear this.
For one thing, it's, one of mine that's totally discredited was that I, first of all, she, the district she came from does not even reflect the district that she came into. And I felt like that, that was, to me, that was a major, uh, dysfunction of where we wanna look at. That, uh, she came from a predominantly white district, and where we are a majority minority district. And I felt like that, that we, we, we need someone who would be more representative of the district itself.
Okay. And I understand what you just said, but my question was, how does it serve the children of Waco I S D for you to not support the superintendent who is leading the I S D? I heard what you said about why you thought she wasn't the best choice. But how does that serve, how does not supporting her serve the kids of the district?
I'm not really sure how to answer that question.
Okay, you know, I, I mean, I didn't tell you the question in advance, so feel free to think about it and get back to me. And at this point, I'm gonna tell you all my super secret cell phone number, most of you already have it if you've been through. But right now, you never know, it's nobody's super secret. It's nine three six, six six one, eight eight zero zero. And you are allowed to call or text whenever you have a question, or, you know, if you wanna think about that, I'm letting you know. I'm, I'm all for it, because I'm not, I'm not saying that to change your mind. I'm saying that to understand how I can help the team, because that's my job. And, yeah. If your child, if you had a child that was in a teacher's class they didn't like. Would you take them out? Would you leave them there, would you...
I think, by the way, in fact, I, I just talked to a parent, uh, a couple weeks ago, he just did that, and, uh...
Who just did what, I'm sorry, I don't...
Took, uh...
Took their child out, okay.
Took the child out of class.
Okay.
And I asked the, asked the board, why did you do it? And, uh, she said that for some reason, that the child and the teacher was not really connecting, communicating, or whatever. And, uh, in fact, I went to a school last week to check on them, because I know the kid. So I went to the school and I checked on them, I asked them myself, how you doing? He told me, he said, yes, sir, I'm doing much better. I said, you like this teacher? He said, yes. Now, I never found out what was the reason, what was wrong with the other teacher, but the way the parent explained it to me, it was more of a, I think, I don't know whether it's just communication or, or what. Or maybe she said something to the kid or something like that. But he's much happier than the parent told me that he is. He has shown some improvement than with this new teacher, they knew more room, they knew without the teacher. So...
So my question to you is, you, your kid, would you have done that? Would you have taken your kid out?
I would whip my kid out.
Oh, okay. And why would you do that? I mean, why would you not take your child out of a class of, of the teacher they didn't like?
It would have to be something, something springing to me to do that.
Okay, but why would you not? I mean, why, how about, your kid just saying, I don't like that teacher, why would that mean you didn't...
I would, I would take them out just because of that.
Why? But I agree with you.
Just because they don't like the teacher?
Why would you not take them out?
Because it's not, it's not, uh, unless I found a reason, you know, if the teacher, uh...
No, 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 no. Your child just came home and said, I don't like that teacher, why would you not take them out?
I wouldn't go in that conversation.
Okay, is it because we need to learn to work with where we are? Because see, what I would tell parents...
Well, well, okay, you ask me like that, but, but the thing that I should do is... Well, well, okay, you ask me like that, but, but, but the thing that I should do is go to a teacher, find out their background, find out their experiences, what have they done before, have, have been other parents have, and they had the same situation, everything like that, and make an evaluation of that.
As a parent or as a board member?
Uh, you said as a parent.
Okay, that's why, I just wanna make sure we're there. But, but people used to call me when I was on the board and say that, and I would say, "I wouldn't do that for my child, because when they get a job, I wouldn't be able to go and say, 'You know what? She needs a different boss,' you know, she just, yeah, that boss doesn't gel with her."
That's what most people say about me.
Yeah, right. But, but, and, but they all respect you when you teach them things. But, but because you can't control the world for your kid. And it's the same thing as a board member. There, of those three superintendents, there were some I got along with better, some I liked better, and some had different strengths, had different, and you were in the military, right?
Yeah.
Did you get to, like, change the ranking officer because you didn't get along with them?
When you knew how to play the game, you could.
Did you get to change the ranking officer, like, get that person out?
No, I got out.
Okay, exactly, exactly, exactly. Well, I'm gonna appeal to your sense of military. Where there's a hierarchy. And if you want teachers in this district to respect the hierarchy, if you want parents to respect the hierarchy, if you want students to respect the hierarchy, I'm gonna call on you to respect it too.
Yeah, but she works for me, I don't work for her.
Yeah, but all of the employees work for her.
Right.
And if you, if you want her to not be successful, then you're doing the right thing. Absolutely, if you wanna me-
I don't think I'm doing anything negative, I'm just expressing my opinion.
Yeah, that's not, that's not negative. Call me on my super secret cell phone number. Okay, what else keeps you awake nights? Hmm? Bedbugs? Did you just say bedbugs?
Okay, can I ask you?
You did say bedbugs.
Am I allowed to ask a question at this point, or is it, we need to answer your question?
No, you are absolutely allowed. This is your team building, this is your dead gum team.
Uh, so, you know, I think that to go kind of off of Angela's thing, what she was saying, people aren't whatever, I forgot kind of how she worded it.
Yeah, we had breakfast, yeah.
But I think that, you know, I think that for the past couple of months, and I don't know when we need to do this, but I think we do need to do this, is I really haven't had discussions with anyone on my board. Like, haven't been able to talk, interact, figure out what Carrie's kids are doing, Robin's kids are doing, what's up with Norman, Jose, I don't know, it's one of them. You know, I just think that that element of meeting together, you know, whether it was even a closed session, was really helpful, because it reminded us again, that we are a team, that we're not an individual island. And it helped because I think that, you know, we are, I would say we are actually a very functional board. That everyone here is here because they care about this district. They care about the kids in this district. So I wouldn't, you know, so I think what has happened over the past couple of months, you know, we moved our, our, our meeting time up, which is, and I vaguely remember you asking, "Hey, we meet at five thirty," something, I don't remember it, but I think that, you know, I think any decisions that are made like that, even though it's super small, would be helpful if it was run by the entire board.
We only change maybe-
We're meeting at six, that's what I was saying.
We don't have a closed session?
We don't have a closed session.
Well, that's not just a rule, that's just, there's, there have been meetings, there have been a meeting without it, and they were closed sessions, bless you.
We didn't have closed sessions maybe before that.
Yeah, we've only been once, took a time before that. But there had been a change.
There has been a change.
Okay, so you used to meet at seven?
Our meetings would start at seven.
Okay, and now they start at six?
Six.
Okay.
And, and I just, which is fine, I just think that as we go-
I thought, well, our meetings always started at six, but we've traditionally had an hour closed session from six to seven. And in the last couple of months, in the transition, there hasn't been an hour closed session each time. As normally, there was always an hour closed session from darkness, and the last couple of months, I haven't been. Anyway, I don't think it's, it's not an intentional, we're always gonna do it differently.
Okay, well, I didn't know that, all I knew is for the past couple of months, it had changed. I wasn't asked about the change, so I'm kind of scrambling, trying to get things done. Anyway, so I just, you know, I think because of that, you know, I think we do closed session, again, I'm gonna go back to, we're a very functional board. Everyone's heart is really here for the right reason. But I think that, you know, we do that, that is super helpful to be able to talk through things, because we are also a very diverse board. And we talked about, you talked about that first one, diversity, inclusion, and engagement. So we have a diversity piece, but I think the inclusion, having people's voices heard, in a closed session, so we can kind of hatch things out, hear the different perspectives, you know, and then we can come out of an open session and discuss it, discuss it, but I think that that is, can be very helpful. Because then it creates the engagement, everyone feels heard, everyone knows that, you know, they're, they're contributing, and when they're contributing. And again, it's been the last couple of months, but it's just, it's because of, and I'm not just saying it from you, Angela, I mean, I could've-
No, I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were saying.
It, I'm not just saying it from you, I mean, I could've emailed just as easily, so I'm not blame shifting whatever being the victim here. But I'm just saying, you know, I think this is good, because I think we're able to sit and talk. But I think that really the, you know, I was wondering kind of what your role was, because I was like, are you gonna be kind of a mediator? Are you gonna help us, like, talk through things, or are you like, what's it gonna look like? And then I realized, oh, okay, you're asking a question, good, but, you know what I mean, I was just, I was, yeah, I guess I was wanting something meatier, where we can kind of connect and talk through things.
Okay, which doesn't have, which doesn't, well, what would meteor look like?
It doesn't have to happen, I realize that we do-
No, but I need to understand, what would meteor look like?
I think talking through just different issues, or talking through different things that regarding the district, um, talking through, um, yeah, and, you know, I think that-
Go ahead, because I'm gonna share something.
Yeah, I, you know, I look at, to be very honest.
Mm-hmm, I'd like to.
Okay, I, um, sometimes when I hear the thought, because where there is no communication, there's a vacuum, it's vacuum, you usually fill up with your own message and your brain work that you know. So anytime there's not communication, that's what I feel, so honestly, I sat here and I thought, "Okay, you're kind of here for an objective." You maybe talk to Angela, Dr. Ken Cannon, given your history of what's been going on this past couple of months, and you're gonna try to, like, fix us. And, um, by fix us, I mean like this in mind, going in one direction. So, that's why I'm voicing that file. But, um, because I think there is a deeper work of trust and communication that probably needs to happen, um, for our board.
Okay.
But it goes back to not being able to get in the room for a couple of months and talk after this huge transition. And, you know, I know Dr. Ken Cannon has had a ginormous transition as well, you know, there's been a lot of shift, so I think there's been a big shift, I shouldn't say there's been a lot. But there's just been a big transition, and I think that, you know, getting together and talking.
What's interesting though, is unless it meets one of the agenda items require, not agenda items, one of the requirements for closed session, you don't get to do that. You don't. I mean, just the idea that there's some stuff we need to talk about, if it does not-
Yeah, yeah.
If it literally does not meet one of those you are meeting illegally. And so, and my objective in asking you the questions that I asked you is that's your chance to bring up whatever keeps you awake nights. See, I can't come in here and say, "This is what I think needs to be fixed," because first of all, this ain't my house, and I don't, I don't know what needs to be fixed. And I certainly can't fix anybody. I can't fix me, so please, if I gave you the impression, or if you had the idea that I come in and I fix folks, that's not my job. Because I get paid whether I live in your fixture or not, I mean, to let, if you wanna be honest, I care. I have been to this district so many times with, under different superintendents, with different board meetings, board members. I care about this district, but no, ma'am, I don't get to come in and tell you what's broken. If there's something you wanna talk about, if it's not a subject, if it's not something you can go in closed session for, this is all you get. Which is why I encourage you, if you have issues between particular folks, that you handle it between particular folks. But I will talk about whatever meeting issues you wanna talk about. I don't have an agenda. And you can ask them, they don't get to tell me what to talk about. They both worked with me before, I, I don't work for them.
Like the Ben where I came in late and didn't hear your objectives, or didn't hear what-
Oh, they weren't objectives, I didn't, I can spell out objectives, because this isn't my meeting. I'm a facilitator, I'm not, I could come in, and there are people who come in and do team building, and they stand right here, and you have death by powerpoint, and they tell you what the rules are, this is what board members do, this is what board members don't do. I don't do that. So by allowing you to say what's good, what needs to be fixed, this is your chance. So what meeting issue do you wanna talk about?
Is this the first time you've meditated?
Uh, oh, not media, I said mediation.
I thought you said there were meter, M-E-A-T-I-E-R, issues that you wanted to talk about. Did, did I make that up?
No, I'm saying, no, I'm saying, is this the first time you've been, been in a session with them?
I think so, I think so.
Yeah, it must be.
Because I've been here for five years.
Because, like I said, she's been here several times.
I have, but I haven't lived here.
Oh, you said the M-E-T-I-E-R.
Yeah, well, I, I, that's what my brain heard, but I put this, that I don't think she wants to talk about out of space, but Carrie, you know, the more I listen to you, the more I'm worried about my own sanity. You know, you know all my secrets.
That's appropriate, that's appropriate.
Yeah. Well, we'll be, we'll be in the same asylum.
Well, I'm not sitting behind, I'm sitting beside him at every meeting, so.
Yeah, so it's, you've gotten my osmosis. But, but honestly, what meter or what-
Well, I don't think, I don't think, I don't think that needs to be discussed now, I think that's something that probably needs to be handled. Probably more of a one-on-one conversation. I don't mind having that conversation. So I think I'm, yeah, so I don't, I don't want to, you know, I think I did talk about the closed session right now, and the meeting time. I think that was kind of depressing, because I just had felt it after this couple of months, and I thought, okay, what's going on? Again, I'm filling in the gap for what I don't know, and so I'm wondering, have we moved meeting times or not? Are we, are we doing away with closed session, what is this looking like? Which you just now filled in, you, you filled in that void of what I didn't know, and what I was filling in for myself. So, yeah, so I think if I need to, I think I will have that conversation. Okay?
Yes. And what I used to say, I think, was if you have a question, somebody else probably has the same question. But I think you will. Okay, what else? What meter or issues you have?
I didn't read it, M-E-A-T-I-E-R, is that what?
Okay, let's talk about the what keeps you awake nights.
I mean, it's still, it's still the exact same question. What, what, what is the issue here? What do we need to be talking about? That's all what keeps you awake nights is.
Yeah.
There's nothing keeps me awake nights.
Teacher turned me.
That's what he said.
Probably my support has, uh, maybe it's just all. That would be very meaty statement.
Why, yeah.
We've been talking about it for, since I've been here. Nobody's made it down, have they? All it's been trying, that one's. The key challenge in the bank. Yeah.
That was not just me.
No, it's down, it's in, it's in all that money. But it, uh, I don't know what it is. I think, I think all the reasons why it's happening, I don't know how you can counter it. But it really doesn't seem like a problem, just, I don't know. It's only gotten worse.
That's, that task is charged by us to the superintendent. Oh, yeah. So you seem to be trying to solve a problem.
No.
It's not on your plate.
He's just sharing. I'm like, he's just sharing.
I said it really can't be happening, I just probably am tired of it.
You lied to us, Carrie, really?
For very good.
And, and, I wholeheartedly agree with you that that is why you hired the superintendent, but I will suggest-
It is a problem or something.
Yeah, or, and, we can say, and, if that sounds better. But it also depends on all of you. Because you, you said, you know, we're forming community partnerships, and, and we're doing, we're doing more, reaching out to the community, reaching out to churches, reaching out to, and that involves all of you.
And we have always had, I think other boards as well, training in the past, we've always had this agreement. Yes, we can agree that this would be, but when that's done, it's over with. Get on board, represent to the communication, to the community, they were on board. There is no conspiracy theory, because what, what's out there in the media, it's, I'm sorry you reacted to that, but-
I thought you went like this, there is no conspiracy theory.
Well, you gotta have both hands up.
Yeah, what, what you're saying is, what you're saying is, everything that we have hidden on here, or come around to, has been in the paper. We know what the, what the attitude is. We know what the perceptions are. It's how to change those, and at this time, November fourteenth, twenty nineteen, all of our channel has to be through the superintendent. And by golly, God bless her, she stepped up with the challenge and said, "I'm on board." Now, why we can't get on board to support an individual that has that level of dedication, motivation, and perseverance is, is taking us way off track, in my opinion. Because keeping the dialogue going without universal support of Dr. Ken Cannon is not perpetuating the success of our students, it's not perpetuating the support of our communities. I'm saying that, our different constituents. And that's where I said, we have the biggest opportunity than any other school district, and yes, there are eighteen or nineteen in McLean County. We have the biggest opportunity because of the assets we have in Waco. Businesses stepped up, the collaborations that we've got. We just haven't done it as a team, but they, and I think that's all in this pack. I mean, pure and simple. Uh, we get along great, I think. But we do get sidetracked occasionally, and we need to rely on each other to get back on track. And I hope that anytime I do that, my colleagues will, will, I respect them, to get me back on track. Lord only knows, I'm a detractor, okay? But I really think the opportunity lies within us, and how we can achieve results through the superintendent, doing the task that we are mandated to do by our constituents. And that's work on behalf of them, the community, to benefit the students. To me, it's not difficult, but it involves diverse personalities that have perhaps different representations that they want to voice. But to me, our voice, or my voice, is superintendent, unless she comes to me and says, "What do you think about this, 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 and this?" She's gonna do that with everybody, not just me. I mean, it's, it's a group, it's a team. So it's not, again, this us versus, it, it's, it's just a tremendous opportunity that, uh, when I see other boards and how they interact, we're not dysfunctional, I agree with you. But I see a lot of boards that are dysfunctional. And Lord, I, 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 it doesn't keep me up at night, but I feel bad for the students, you know? And I, all that we can deal with is how we interact with each other, and how we can support our superintendent, because she's the one that we've vested with the responsibility to lead and take charge of the district, and handle all these HR issues, handle all the compliance issues, handle all the testing issues, which is a daunting task. handle all the testing issues, which is a daunting task. And I think we trust each other. But it's unfortunate that we perhaps in total don't as a group trust the superintendent. And that's, that's, I think, is an opportunity of love.
I think you would agree that trust is something that doesn't come automatically. It's something that has to be built. It's something that's sometimes difficult to build, but very easy to destroy. It can be something you said, something I thought you said, something I heard you said, and it just snowballs. And then, once I don't trust you on that, and I don't trust you on something else, and... But part of what is, should happen, when you get a new team, new team member, new superintendent, new team member, is there should be a transition session. And one of the things that you should talk about is, what do I need from you? What does the board need from the superintendent? What does the superintendent need from the board? Because it doesn't matter whether you voted for her or against her, she is the superintendent. You know, that's just the way it is. And if you say, well, I'm not going to support the superintendent until it's a superintendent I voted for, then what happens when we get a superintendent you voted for, but there are other folks who say, we're not going to support him or her? So it becomes this, this kind of like being on the seesaw. And in the meantime, who gets hurt are the students. Because you're all adults. You, you might get your feelings hurt a little bit, but it's not going to affect your livelihood, it's not going to affect how you live. But who gets hurt are the staff. When you don't get along, you don't agree, you're not supported. The students, the families, the community. And I just heard every one of you in your own way saying that this is your community, you're proud of your community, you are proud of your district, you're proud of your students, you're... So how do we collectively convey that? In everything we say or do? Because I know you can say, I'm just one board member. I don't speak for anybody, for me. But I promise you, after spending sixteen years on a board, the community hears, the board said, the board did, every time one of you speaks. I'm, I'm not making this up, and you know it's true. So you can say, I'm standing alone on this, but what they hear is that the board can't get along. The board doesn't agree. So how do you expect them to believe you when you say you support them? Okay? So what I'm going to ask you, the reason it's hard to hear, and I just started doing this in July or August, I think, is at the end, I'm going to ask you, what one thing can the superintendent start, stop, or continue to do that will make this team better? Then I'm going to ask you, what one thing can the board president start, stop, or continue to do that will make this team better? Then I'm going to ask you, what can the other board members start, stop, or continue to do that will make this team better? And then I'm going to ask you, what can you stop, start, or continue to do? So be thinking about that. Because that'll be the basis for those deeper conversations. Because we're not fixing anything tonight, that's not what I'm hired for. Because if I was hired, I would never get paid. If a lot of districts, they'd be like, oh, you didn't fix anything, no money for you, Tazby. But the next thing I need to do though, because the statute says, and we're going to give you team building credit, we have to talk about this. And those of you who have been here for a while, we've talked about this until we're blue in the face. But it says every year, we've got to talk about it. Because the other question I have to ask you is, what further continuing education does this team need? And this is not Tazby, this is not K Douglas, this may be a book study, it may be something. But what does the team need? And then you have to act, tell me at least one thing that you personally need more information about. And you can tell me one of these five things, you can tell me school finance, school law, going to involvement, engagement, whatever. So I'm giving you the answers to, I'm telling you what the test is going to be in the last few minutes of this. But we're going to spend time talking about this because sometimes people think that what I say is just my own ideas, it's not. This came down from the State Board of Education. And I can point to parts of every conversation we've had that are in this. But it says in the preamble that your job is to make policy. You are the educational policymaking body for school districts. That in order to do that, you must work together with the superintendent. The second, second sentence says, to effectively meet the challenges of public education, school board and superintendents must function together as a leadership team. I did not make that up. And then is where it said, each leadership team has to annually talk about what they need as a team, what they need individually. Yes?
The Board of Trustees is the educational policymaking body for Texas Public Schools? I thought that was T E A, we only give local policies.
Um, you are the policymaking body for the public school district.
Local policies.
Yes, yes. Legal policies you have nothing to do with because they are simply law. But yes, you are making policies.
So they should make this a global?
Well, I'm not.
I know.
I didn't write, I didn't rewrite it in twenty twelve. I certainly felt State Board of Education with all the authority vested in me, which is none, that normally that I think it should say, but no. And everybody that sat here wrote this, we didn't. Well, some of us we did, but we didn't adopt it. Okay, so vision. What this says is, the board ensures the creation of a shared vision that promotes enhanced student achievement. And it says, a shared vision. And the most important word there is share. You don't get points for being, growing in a different direction. And as you said, we've got to have those conversations because otherwise, you can't have a shared vision. If every one of you has your own vision for where Wakeville ISD is going, you have no vision. And more importantly, the superintendent can't follow the vision of seven different people. And what it says is, the board keeps the district focused on the educational welfare of all children. And if your focus is on the educational welfare of all children, then you have to be doing, everything you do and say has to be about all kids, not just the ones living in your district, or who look like you, or who worship where you worship, or play with your grandkids and your kids, it is all. And that's bigger than just me and mine. And it says that the fifth one down, well, the sixth one down is one that they added in twenty twelve. It says, individual board members should not have individual agendas separate and apart from the shared vision. That doesn't mean that you don't have things that you are passionate about. But what it means is those things can never be bigger than the shared vision. If you are spending more time advocating for, talking about, acting about something that is outside the shared vision, then you're not, there is no shared vision. The second one is structure, it says, you provide guidance and direction for accomplishing the vision. So once you all agree on what the vision is, once you agree on what the goals are, then you're putting in place the structure that allows that to happen. That's where the budget comes in, that's where the policies come in. Two things under this. The third one, the third bullet down in the structure says, the board focuses its actions on policymaking, planning, and evaluation. Nowhere in there is there HR, is there, you know, evaluating schools? Is there being, you know, the, the public service person? Because we'll get to that in advocacy. But it says, policymaking, planning, and evaluation. And it restricts its involvement and management to the responsibility of oversight. So you set the policies in your governance role. The superintendent and staff are putting those things into place to accomplish what you've wanted in that vision. And then in your oversight role, you say, how's it working? That's part of what we did today, is talk about what's going well, what's not. Because that's your oversight role. The second to the last bullet down, it says, the board oversees the management of the district by employing a superintendent and evaluating the superintendent's performance and how well she provides educational leadership, manages the daily operations, and then does all the other duties that are assigned by rule and law. So that's your oversight role. It is not having to go and inspect and make sure that things are going the way you've heard they're going. It is setting the policies and then the guiding. Come over to the board, measures and communicates how well the vision is being accomplished. So you've got the vision, you've put in place the structure, so now you're getting reports to know, are we meeting that? The first bullet under that says, the board ensures progress towards achievement of the district goals through a systematic, timely, and comprehensive review of reports that are either prepared by or at the direction of the superintendent. So she is going to constantly be giving you information about how, um, the programs are going, how transportation's going, how food service is going, how dual credit's going. All of those things, how facilities are going. Because you're going to get that information because you need to put in your evaluation role. The last two bullets. The second to the last one says that the board evaluates the superintendent's performance annually in compliance with state laws and regulations. But it also says, the board evaluates itself. It says, the board annually evaluates its own performance in fulfilling the board's duties and responsibilities and the board's ability to work with the superintendent as a team. Isn't that legal or hard in the guy? It's not just a nice suggestion. It's saying, yes, you're going to hold the superintendent accountable, just like she's going to hold her staff accountable, and they're going to hold their staff accountable. But it also says, you look at how well you were doing as a team and how well you worked with the superintendent. And if that's not happening, if you're not working well, or if you're not evaluating, you're not doing your job. Advocacy, the board promotes the vision. Says, the board demonstrates its commitment to the shared vision, mission, and goals by clearly communicating them to the superintendent, the staff, and the community. If the community knew what you were trying to do, they could help you do it. That's what you're talking about, those partnerships. You're telling them, these are the things that are important to us, these are the things we're striving for, here's how you can help. The fourth bullet down says, the board supports children by establishing partnerships between the district, parents, business leaders, and other community members as an integral part of the district's educational program. Those partnerships don't work if your partnership doesn't work. I'm sorry, I'm not going to, it's, it's kind of like when you have parents and you have a child. You know, kids will say, go to dad and say, mom said I can do this. And they'll go to mom and say, dad said I can do that. And if they can divide, they conquer. It's the same thing. And we're going to talk in a second about unity, and I'm going to tell you that unity is not unanimity. You're not going to be seven oh on every, every decision. But exactly what you said, regardless of whether it's seven oh, six one, five two, four three, once the decision is made, it becomes the decision of the board. And that's hard. It is hard when it didn't go the way you wanted it to go. But it's still that you support it. Okay? Under unity, the board works with the superintendent to lead the district toward the vision. A house divided against itself can't stand. Doesn't matter whether it's a family, doesn't matter whether it's an organization, it doesn't work. Two things. The first bullet under unity says, the board ensures that its members understand and respect the need to function as a team in governing and overseeing the management of the district. They added that one in twenty twelve. And the last bullet under unity says, the board supports decisions of the majority after honoring the right of individual members to express opposing viewpoints and vote individually. So I don't think this board has a problem saying how they feel about stuff. I kind of, kind of just, just guess that. But after everybody has a chance to say how they feel about something, you vote them. And the majority agrees. That doesn't change. Okay, so I have two questions with regard to this. Which one of these five things or the bullets underneath it, does this team most need to work on for the next year? Do you take a minute, okay? Okay, have a break.
Take a break.
You don't keep, you're doing good.
We don't want to say a word without you, Kerry. I'm going to give y'all five minutes. Follow Kerry.
Well, don't follow Kerry.
No, don't follow Kerry. Just do, just go, do whatever it is you need to do for five minutes. Because we'll come back, I'll still be sitting here, I'm not going anywhere.
Kerry, have you done your homework? The question is.
Jose, we were just discussing.
Yes, I saw that. It was teamwork, collaboration at its best.
Were we not supposed to collaborate?
No, you were absolutely supposed to collaborate. But not when someone else.
I'm struggling with the options.
Okay, well, it's kind of like getting you the menu to order from, for dinner. Take a look at it and decide what your options are.
Are we going to have some call?
I will talk to you about that. No, that, this is not what the card took for, Kerry, pay attention.
Card your phone?
Not now, Kerry.
Play it?
Yes, later.
I was going to sit him out while I like.
You're going to have to pay a lot of money to do that.
Someone can have David's voice. We could spend more money on pants.
It's a little pretty.
Taxpayer it all.
Yeah. Okay, has anybody identified one, at least one for the team? What you need to work on, give it to the board about, in the community for the team? Can I add another one? Not that one's not good, but I don't want to make it a, you get to say yours.
Can we change?
Can you change? Can you change what someone else said?
No. Based on what somebody else said.
Yeah?
Of course.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what that point is.
I'm saying, I'll say vision.
Okay, is that for the team?
Yeah.
Okay.
She took you.
Oh, okay. It's not competition, you can, you can have vision and unity, they actually go very well together. It's hard, I said at least one. But you, it's hard to have vision if you don't have immunity. It really is. Okay, anybody else have anything else? I think this is my number.
You want vision too?
You can. And that's it. Is that like the sequel to vision, vision one, vision two?
Vision, vision one, four, one.
Right.
One point out.
Yeah, right. Okay, now from each one of you, individually, I need at least one thing that you need to work on individually. And preferably you don't give me vision or immunity, just because that's what we're doing for the team. But you can give me anything you want, because here's the deal. This is not someone who comes back and says, you know what, you said vision, but you didn't work on vision. This is just to give you an idea of what you do for the next year.
I'll say.
Yes.
Structure. It's pretty simple. Because it's the longest list of things that we have to do.
No, that's just you. Let me just say something.
It's a woman in the sun.
Let me just say, I have never heard anyone give that as a reason ever, I've learned that. Not one to shy away from a challenge.
I think advocacy is...
You're doing the easy stuff.
Just because I'm newer on the board and trying to figure out what that looks like sometimes.
I'm old on board, I'm busy sometimes.
We still have challenges advocacy. We kind of wear to... Because obviously, we don't have unlimited time.
You don't?
I know.
You might have a real life?
Really, right now, not as much as I used to, but I do have a little bit of a real life. And, but just trying to kind of figure out what's the best use of limited resources for advocacy. For me personally.
And when I talk to boards, when they talk about these five things, they say that that is the one thing, if they had to pick one, that they do the worst at. Yeah, it's advocacy. Because, and think about it, advocacy, not just within the district, within Waco, but nationally, state level, and there's so many different moving parts that...
And my perception is that I think a lot of people who are on the board before I can only work with, have that piece.
See? They're just saying too well.
And that's right.
I can say it for me, I know that they're just saying too well.
No, I'm just kidding.
But you know, that's for me. Trying to figure out what that looks like.
And it looks different depending on the time. I mean, it's sometimes more difficult than others. More difficult locally, sometimes, more difficult... Difficult, anyway, yeah, I'm losing my language. Okay, anybody else?
For me, it's accountability because of the reputation with Dr. Kinkin and how many of the programs that we have that have just not been managed or overseen. I just feel like... And then also when we had school short as Fs this year, but should not have been Fs. Feel just not, we weren't doing a very good job of...
Because the interesting thing for me is even districts that got As said, "Thank you for the A" in the fly system. And the idea, when we went to reading the schools, is, well, even with districts, if you get an A, the assumption is that everybody in that school or that district has succeeded, and we know that's not true. Conversely, if you get an F, it's that nobody is succeeding in that school or that district, and we know that's not true either. So being able to... I mean, it's not going away anytime soon, but being able to work with that, but also know what does our community count as success? You know, what are we doing for those other pieces that are not measured on the star test? That are not measured on the in-person exams? Because so many of the things that you were telling me that are proud that make you are not ever going to be measured by TEA unless you look at their career, you know, college and career, military rating. But so much of what you're doing, what you instill in the kids, is not going to be measured. So being able to say that. Exactly. I'm telling you brilliance on recess.
Yeah, but CE, A is the god in this, you know, like I say, you know. Yeah, what you're saying is right, but then, I mean, even with the few sessions I went to at the proceed room, still trying to understand this, still trying to get people to understand it. I mean, it is like a Chinese repertory.
But that sounds difficult. And the problem for me is that, the problem for me is that TEA, the legislature passes rules. TEA is coming up with how, I mean, laws, and they're coming up with the rules. But they're making it up as they go, that even now, we have legislation that says you have to learn about child abuse, you have to learn about sex trafficking. And nobody knows what the curriculum is supposed to be, including TEA. And yet, the law went into effect September 1. So if you make them god, then we are all in hell. Let's just be real. So it has to be, no, they have, they have power. They have power, but you all have the authority to make things that are appropriate for your community. Yes, you have to jump through these hoops, but how do you support those teachers? How do you keep those folks? How do you... So it's beyond, I want you to think beyond that.
Well, and we were talking about advocacy, you know. If the board promotes the vision, and I know the vision is between the team of eight there now, but then it can be cloudy. I'm sorry, I mean, it's cloudy right now, more so because we just got a new superintendent. We haven't been there, what, three months or something like that? So how do you, you know, we, like I said, we're still getting to mark each other and everything like that. So it is, it's just cloudy.
And that's okay. As long as the goal is to have it be crystal clear at some point, as long as the goal is to have it be something that all eight of you can support and advocate for, and hold each other accountable for. So you're right where you probably need to be right now. But you're not going to stay there. Well, you can't. You can't. You know, nothing's the same, but how do we get behind that? How do we shape that into something that the eight of us can support? How do we do that? And TEA are going to get started, you decide that. So, yeah. So I have you down for structure, you down for advocacy? Well, you down. You down for advocacy? You down for accountability? You've got the long list, okay? Who else? I won't make eye contact.
I'll just go with unity.
Okay. Any particular aspect of this? I got you. And usually for baby board members, I just put down earth thing. I call it earth. Earth thing and lots of no.
You mean you're...
You're right.
The giants, maybe, or...
Yes. Yeah. Now, Norman, I don't actually have one down for you. Did you give me one? You were talking to me, but I didn't hear a specific one.
I'm sure of vision.
Oh, yes, he said vision. I mean, he talked about vision. He said it was cloudy. I didn't know if that was cloudy. I want to work on it.
Well, no, I'm briefly, advocacy, the board promotes the vision, that's why.
Ah, so advocacy is your thing I put by your name? See? They're as confused as I am. It was very cloudy. So I need for you to clear the clouds.
Even from general to specific, like what we thought the board needed, and then what we thought ourselves needed.
Yes, we did. So I want you to know what Norman self needs.
Vision, advocacy and vision.
Okay, that's clear, I like that.
That's clear as wood.
I almost said that, but I said, no, no, I... I liked it. You're the only one who likes it. No, no, no competition, not, not, sorry, anything.
They changed the rule.
I didn't change anything.
It was a competition.
I know. And you do know vision is in all of those definitions, right? You do realize it carries across all of them. But I don't want you to add anymore. I'm not trying to encourage you, I'm just saying. Carrie won't come. What?
I'm done.
You have those little shiny moments too, don't you? I see.
You get lost in my thoughts.
Me too. You do, ooh, shiny.
I'll just add that as well.
Okay, Carrie, Susan, Stephanie, I don't have anything else to do today.
Want to work on the three in there?
I have to say structure.
We all need structure.
So, evidently.
All of them. And with... There's five. Are PA equal?
I'll be there.
Urbate. Urbate is three of these.
I think accountability, I think that, you know, in our brief tangle with the expert from the TEA somewhere in the back, and I think he was correct in this, in identifying probably a common mountain of board activities is a focus on all kinds of things, except what we're supposed to be doing, and that's making sure that. One of the troubles with sitting up there is that the circus act out here is not always geared towards providing for your grades. It hasn't been, so we've got an opportunity to change this. Just tell me the truth. Please, just tell me the truth. You know, we never see the same thing twice two years from now. It's, the information's always presented, and I think that's by design, I think TEA imparted across over there, but they're also, they've got willing complicitors inside districts that don't...
Is that actually a reward? I like it though, I do like it.
Well, feel free to use it. I'm not having copyright. Inside school districts that aren't really keen on being found out either, about how they're doing. And it's a man. They also know that only time during the day to chase them down here and figure it out.
But you do have to.
Right. But, you know, and I think that we've talked it up, we're trying to develop, it's also not easy to do, I think. You know, what attempt could be imagined? I think this is kind of been a problem. But we spent a lot of time developing some goals and some stuff that I think were really quite, it's kind of abstract from me. I'm not sure I got it. Go progress measure? Remember some terminology?
Yeah, it's still there.
But trying to attach meaning to all of it was didn't follow my intuition. So, yeah, accountability. And I can't describe it, I know that we're not getting it done now, we never have. I'd like to see, you know, us do better there. I think we've made a good start on something, you know, pretty great reading scores. School readiness, I think, was going to be, of course, that's one that Crawford Waco has latched on to. Wasn't enough they were causal and all that, I'm not sure, but it's an important measure to everything in the board. Is that enough on me?
That is, because when you want to run out of the door, I can't let you go until I've gotten all my stuff, so, yes.
You give cards then?
No, you can knock into cards until Stephanie gives me hers, but she couldn't give me hers till you were done with yours. So, go ahead.
Um, I think, for me, it would probably be a little bit of accountability and advocacy.
Okay. And all I'm going to do is report this back to you. I don't have any advocacy to judge it. Oh, now you want to leave, I'm giving out the cards. Take one, pass one, let the rest down, please. I'm going to have you write something on there, we are not going to read it, I'm not going to read it tonight. Do not put your name on it, please, I don't need to know who said what. Yes, see, I'm really quick, I said it. Took me about 10 minutes to do that, actually. And what I want you to write on this is, what is one thing the superintendent can either start doing, stop doing, or continue to do that will make this team more successful? So, start. The superintendent, correct, that will be very hard.
This team, or?
This team.
This group, or?
No, this team, these eight folks. The team of eight. And you do have to answer that, even though you're the superintendent.
Retreat to court.
What is one thing that the superintendent, Dr. Kinkin, has been either start doing, or stop doing, or continue to do? Not all three, and you do have to fill this out, man. Even though you're writing about yourself. Pretend it's not yourself.
How many did you write?
I bought those small cards for a reason, but whatever you can squeeze on there in the two minutes I'm going to give you, help yourself there. And if you don't get it written down, call my super secret cell phone number, and you can talk to me at the end. I don't know, thank you. Hold on, I'm going to have to turn this around and look for Stephanie to move here. You're going to turn face down in front of you, while you're gifting your all. Okay, good job.
Do you like this final jeopardy? So, have you asked me?
Five hearts. I've got a tie in final jeopardy one minute.
Have you asked me five hearts?
And those are the department pins.
Okay. They know who they stole them from.
Exactly. I used to love when people would have a pin that said stolen from, and then it was insane. Take one down, take one, pass it down. It almost sounded like fear of stopping someone. Take one, pass it down. Yeah.
So the red and the green and the blue are significant to you, right?
Yes. The blue is what can Angela, your board president, do, start doing, or stop doing, or continue to do to make the team of eight more successful? What can everybody else do? All the rest of the board members? What can they do, what can they start, stop, or continue to do to make the scheme of eight better? If there's one thing, what can you start doing, stop doing, or continue to do?
Does this all the board member remain?
Everybody here. Everybody. Rest in them. Everybody else.
That's a choice, you can choose.
I mean, it can be something that you want to be continued to do, maybe something great I can do, or that I should continue to do. But stop, start, or continue. Tash, that to each other.
Yeah.
Sense of that. Yeah. We always have to have them sitting on air, you know. And this one is, what can you do? We talked about what superintendent can do, what board president can do, what everybody else can do, what can you do? What can you start, stop, or continue that will make this team of eight more successful?
Yeah, that's right.
That's good. That was so refreshing. He said, how come? I didn't mean invitation. He said, could you not invite? I don't know what it's doing, but.
It was fun.
It's a polite.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, someone didn't move the invitations to the right spot.
What did you do?
Sorry.
There it is. That's exactly. Did you stop by and talk to him and give him a visit?
Pass them, pass them this way, face down, please.
Can we look at the other page?
No, you cannot. No, you cannot. Because I noticed you took a long time on the other card, but when it got to you, you wouldn't have. I'm not, I'm going to see whether you wrote to yourself. Just continue to be what you're supposed to be, can I say?
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for being able to be engaged, engaging in difficult conversation. Have to tell you, my heart is absolutely broken about the California shooting.
Right.
I am so sorry. I was on the board when Columbine happened and we were down and it was never going to happen again. I thank each one of you for what you do. I know what you do is not easy. And it's really not easy in a, in a big city that has to do with, it has. University, university is still a good.
Makes for good stories sometimes.
It does. But I just thank you and encourage you to keep doing what you do. And do what you can. I will get back the responses on these and the continuing education to, to you and you will share it with the entire board. I think it will be interesting to see what other people wrote and maybe more insight and I could possibly give you on what the next steps are. And I've given you my cell phone number and you can call or text me anytime, literally. I mean, weekends because when I want to answer to something, I don't want to wait until Wednesday, Friday, even if I'm. And thank you for leaving.
I need some help with my handwriting.
I think it's a little bit too late.
After I roll over here a little bit. No, I'm just, uh, I'll, I'll call and leave my cell phone.
You know, I.
Send me a picture.
I bring it so. I, 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 sometimes I kind of have to turn them upside down, especially with lefties.
I'm looking to get there with this one.
I find that I can, and if I, and if I don't, in a vacuum, I'll just make it up.
Follow the.
So if you've seen it, it doesn't.
Right, and then come back down.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Carrie, I would expect nothing less from you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Very welcome.
Oh, you're more than welcome to keep those, and if you don't want to keep those, you can give them back and I'll give them to.
I think ideally we would have tried to do some work on these operating procedures, but because we don't have the local policy back about the public comment, uh, we can't do that yet. And so these are recommendations from my attorney, and I hadn't read them until like, on the night. So it's going to be, I, I would like to talk to us about what is proposing and why. So anyway, these are technically given. So just, uh, let it go. Mainly the chat is here to public comment because of the.
It's the firm lawyers.
They insert that.
It looks like Karen gave it to Aaron ago now. Here can you get it in the other page?
I'm tracking all for Bill.
I didn't accept it anyway, it was actually an offer and acceptance, so. I'm jacked.
It's $5, I'll bring it down.
Yeah. I should have had to talk to you. Yeah.